John.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Nate?
Here.
And Travis is sick. Fudge of allegiance.
Fudge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for a consent agenda?
Just want to make sure that you guys saw that I did add a few bills up there. Christina was gone today, so I had to create the report myself, so that's why it's separate, not together.
Motion to approve with the new payments.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public input, this is a time and place for discussion, items not already on the agenda. Nobody? Proclamation Iowa Honeybee Day.
That's a proclamation that's supposed to be read by the mayor?
Oh yeah, my computer won't even work.
Oh, okay. It's a long one, I'll read it for you then Doug.
Get used to what you're gonna do for the next four years.
Whereas, whereas.
Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food we eat, and honeybees are vital in production of over ninety crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. Honeybees contribute to a healthy Iowa environment by assuring availability of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and flowers for wildlife in all Iowans. Whereas Iowa's forty-five thousand or more honeybee hives produce about four million pounds of honey valued at over eight million dollars, and honeybees provide an estimated ninety-two million economic value to Iowa crops from their pollination. Whereas Iowa has over forty-five hundred beekeepers representing hobbyists, side liners as part-time businesses, and full-time commercial beekeepers. Hobby beekeepers have as few as one hive to commercial operations with thousands of hives. Whereas traditionally, beekeeping occurred in rural areas of Iowa. Now beekeeping increasingly occurs in urban areas with the rising interest of hobby beekeepers for keeping beehives in Iowa cities and towns. Whereas the state of Iowa has an active apiary.
Apiary.
Apiary inspection program to protect honeybees and beekeepers from introduction and spread of apiary diseases and pests. Nate, you're gonna read the next one.
There you go.
Whereas honeybees face serious threats from invasive pests, decreasing bee-friendly forage, variable climate, and increasing pesticide and herbicide pressure. Whereas our state and county road sides comprise of a total of almost one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand miles, providing native plantings and reducing mowing and spraying of herbicides on the road sides are helping pollinator survival. Therefore, I, Kim Reynolds, Governor of the State of Iowa, along with cities and counties, do hereby proclaim Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty, as Iowa Honeybee Day, and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors to join in observing this day and focus on the importance of honeybees to our state economy, to enjoy the honey and other products of honeybees, to recognize the honeybee's role in maintaining our Iowa environment, and to assist in reducing the threats to honeybee survival in our state.
Mkey doki. Sub-public hearing proposed tax levy for financial year twenty-one budget for February tenth, two thousand twenty.
This is actually something new that I've been trying to explain to you guys that the state has come up with. They want us to make sure that we are notifying the public and making them aware of what our budget consists of each year. So they added this extra hearing. But it's kind of confusing because this extra hearing is pretty much a notification of how much taxes we're going to levy. It doesn't include our debt service levy and a few other things, so it's really misleading because it states that we will have a three-point-nine-four percent increase in our budget next year. But we actually won't, our budget will probably go down slightly because our debt service levy is going to go down. So I understand what the state's trying to do to make the public more aware of what's going on and what you guys do with the budget, but what they're doing is really kind of misleading and confusing. So, but we have to do it. So we have to set a public hearing, we have to hold a public hearings, approve this by resolution at that meeting, and before we can even do, set a public hearing for the regular budget.
Motion to approve the public hearing.
And set it for the tenth?
Yep.
Got a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion second, Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance oh-one, twenty-twenty, increase in water rates, possible suspension of rules in place on third and final reading. So we increased in, what, two or three?
It was... Two.
Two percent. Motion to approve the second reading.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Do I have a suspension of the rules in place on third and final reading?
Nope.
Let's go on, and second reading of ordinance oh-two, twenty-twenty, increase sewer rates, possible suspension of rules in place on third and final reading.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion second. Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Anybody wanna suspend and move, go to the third? Mkey doki. Discuss discussion and possible action of part-time park and recreation director position becoming a full-time position.
This was one of the things that you guys asked me to put on this agenda from the last meeting. I pulled the park and recreation director job description, and you guys aren't able to pull up your thing, are you?
I just can't.
You just can't, okay. So I did go through it just to see where we were at with that and add different things. I highlighted everything in yellow that we added. The first page, number three, we added park cleanup day, toddler time, and park capital improvement projects to number three. On the second page, I did some changing, so number thirteen now is responsible for mowing, weed eating, and...
What about number eight?
Oh, eight, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Scheduling ballfield.
Scheduling ballfield rentals and maintaining and monitoring the Lisbon Park and Rec Facebook page. That's one of the things that Christina is now doing, so we would turn that over to the park and rec director. Thirteen, responsible for mowing, weed eating, and maintaining all city parks. Fourteen would be responsible for maintaining all flower beds at the city parks, as well as watering the downtown planters. Fifteen would be the same as it was before, the bathrooms, and then adding sixteen, which is responsible for assisting with opening and closing the splash pad during the season, as well as assisting with testing of chemicals. Must be able to obtain certified pool operator certification. So I had Christina look at this too, to make sure we added everything that needed to be added. Just wanted you guys to have time to review, to see if there was anything else that needed to be added or any comments that you had. I mean, it's nothing that we have to do tonight, but I just wanted to get the information to you. Looking at the position right now, the current position averages twenty-seven hours a week, so if you take the salary that's paid by the twenty-seven hours, it comes out to seventeen-point-nine-nine-eight-seven-six, or something like that, per hour. So if it was increased to a forty-hour work week, it would be around thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty dollars a year.
Plus benefits.
Huh? Plus benefits, yep. I did check with Mark, he reviewed our policy that we currently have, and this position, if we did change it to full-time, would have to be, we would have to advertise it. There's no time limit on, you know, how long we advertise, but our, customarily, we usually do it two weeks.
Is there any need for, I mean, you have responsible for mowing, weed eating, and maintaining all city parks, is there any need for any winter time maintenance activities akin with that?
Well, that's the...
Like plowing?
The sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, shoveling, we need to make sure we put that.
At the parks.
Good one.
I know we talked about if we went, if you went to a full-time position that we wouldn't hire summer help. I still would like to have summer help. I mean, it's just a simple fact, when he's chopping fields and stuff, he usually takes two of them to do it. That way we don't have to pull our city guys to help with that.
I don't know if it usually does or not. Do you usually? So pretty much the summer help last year did, most of the mornings was watering the planters and stuff downtown and weeding the flower beds.
And plus this ain't gonna take effect until July first.
July first, yep.
So, I mean, that's something we need to think about, about the summer help.
Because when would summer help start?
May, usually they start right after school gets out. And then they start right away with cleaning all the flower beds at the parks, is what they usually start with. And then, once we get the planters planted, then they start watering every morning. Last year we had one employee and he was busy, but he was able to maintain what needed to be done.
If it's common practice, maybe or not common practice, to borrow from public works to assist, would it also be common practice for him to assist public works in anything? And is that okay?
The problem we had before was that if, these guys are union positions, so if we use Drayton to do something that a union employee should be doing, they can protest stating that we're depriving them from their overtime hours because we're giving them to Drayton. So it can get us into trouble, so that's why we've never combined the positions before. But, like I said, Drayton is not a union position, so he can handle everything that has to do with the parks. But these guys can help him, but he's...
But we can't go vice versa.
Not, we shouldn't.
They can help him because he's not union, but he can't help them because they are union.
Unless you made it a union position. Unless you made it a union position, I don't know if you'd want to do that.
It's, like I said, it's just kind of, if it's not in his job duties and he's doing one of their job duties, it can cause a...
So why wouldn't we put it a union position?
I didn't say we couldn't, I'm just saying.
You mean we're gonna be in union?
I'm with you though, I mean, why not make it, why not give us the freedom to do that? And when he's got slow times of the year, could utilize his assistance and...
But what I'm trying to say is if going down to the sewer plant and do a test is not in Drayton's job description, then he's taking that away from Nate, or, yeah, so we'd have to be careful with that.
But what he's asking is if Drayton's position was union, does that solve that problem? Because they're all union.
Right.
And you're saying no?
I'm not sure if it would or not, Travis, you're...
Well, he wouldn't be qualified for it, for one thing, I mean, he's out of school.
Well, okay, but I'm saying, like, what if, what if Drayton plowed Main Street?
County might get hit by a bus walking across the street, and the next, it could be a problem at that point, so, I mean...
You never know when an employee might get upset about something.
Right.
And it could be, you know, nothing, but...
I mean, I'd have to check, I'd assume that if it was under the union, then he could cross that, but I don't know how salary's gonna work with him under a union position. I don't think he'd be salary under the union.
Oh, he needs to punch a time clock. Yeah, you're probably right.
During the winter, would he have enough to keep him busy?
There's gonna be times in the winter, I was assuming that he will get forty hours in, but there's gonna be some times during the summer that he might get fifty or sixty. So it's just balances out.
And in that scenario, that wouldn't work out good for us, because then in the summer he'd get paid overtime, and in the winter, we would basically just find something for him to do to get forty hours. If he was union.
I think with the hours that he has to work, you're, you really couldn't go out of the salary.
It is hard, because sometimes it's at night, sometimes it's on the weekends, I mean, it's Sunday, it's...
Most of his work is in the evenings and Saturdays.
Yeah.
You know, with the sport, with the rec part of it, yes.
Yeah. Well, so what are you looking for tonight? Are you looking for us to give you to post the job, or...
We have plenty of time to post, because we can't hire, I mean, it would be till July first, so... But I just wanted you guys to start looking at the job description, and I wanted to give you the information that I found from Mark and make you aware of what the salary would be.
And these changes in yellow are intended for the full-time version of this job description?
For the full-time version, yeah. Those are what we added to change it to a full-time. I'm not saying we can't add anything else, or, you know, whatever, I just, that's just what, I reviewed it and Christina reviewed it to make sure we included everything that she has been doing.
Did you put a requirement in here or a recommendation in here that he have office hours during the week?
I did not.
I don't know if that's something that's another thing to consider besides snow shoveling.
Yep, so people know, we used to do that with the zoning administrator too. We tried to do that with, yep, that's a good idea too. That way people know, these certain hours of the week, he'll be in the office.
And I know you didn't put this in here, but does it, or maybe you did and I just didn't see it, but does there need to be something in there about the filling in for office staff when? Because didn't you say that that was one of the other things that you wanted him to do?
Yeah, since we are, we're not union positions, he could, he could do that every once in a while, yep. Okay, got fill-in office, office hours, and what was the other thing we talked about? Those three things.
Shoveling and...
Shoveling, I got shoveling, okay.
The sidewalks and stuff like that at the parks.
Okay. All right, anything you can think of, Drayton, that you left out, or? Okay.
Discussion and possible action to budget for update of comprehensive plan and future land use map.
After my whining and begging last council meeting, I talked to EC cog. Unfortunately, they have let their director go, they're doing some revamping of their office. So the ten-thousand-dollar quote that they had given me last time, they decided to, the new management or acting director felt that they weren't really doing the best job they could do with the comprehensive plans, and after talking to several other clerks that have used them, they kind of felt the same way. So they're changing the way that they're doing the comprehensive plans, and their price is now going to be at least eighteen thousand instead of ten. So I talked to several other city clerks, and the scary thing was most cities have paid anywhere from twenty to fifty thousand dollars for a comprehensive plan. So the only other option was, the University of Iowa is having students help out with comprehensive plans, but their starting rate is twelve thousand. So the ten thousand sounds like it's gonna be a deal of the past. What I would like to do, though, is still budget ten thousand. There is some of the comprehensive plan that I can do, and, but there's quite a bit that takes an engineering or a planning background to put in charts and put in figures and numbers and stuff. I've talked to the civil engineer that we're using for the sports complex. They have never done a comprehensive plan from the beginning, but they've worked on future land use plans, street project plans, you know, where you plan for the next ten to twenty years for your street project stuff. So she's gonna take a look at it to see if the other parts that I wouldn't have time or the information to do, if they can help us with that and see, and give us a price there. So still looking into that, but when we consider the budget, I would still like to, if possible, put ten thousand into that fund, just to see where we can go with that. Our comprehensive plan right now goes through twenty-twenty-two, so we have a little bit of time, but it can be...
Can this be treated like a capital improvement fund, where we put a couple thousand a year into it? So that after twenty years of the comprehensive plan, we'd have the money to cover the next one?
Yeah, and we probably should, we probably should have been, but...
Just throwing it out there.
If the University of Iowa is doing it, are there any other colleges that do it, do you know of?
Not that I know.
That may not charge as much as the university, I mean, just a smaller university?
I can check, but that was the one that EC cog had told me that they were starting that to have students help with that. With that, I would be doing a lot more than I would if EC cog did it, because I would have to help them with it too.
Sure.
But I think Wofford just spent, well, close to fifty thousand. Kelowna just did, redid theirs, and I think they paid twenty-four thousand, so...
How closely have we followed the comprehensive plan? I mean, if we make an investment like this, or is it something that's a twenty-year plan and we follow it, or?
We have to have a comprehensive plan, we're required to. So, but luckily they're for twenty years, but the state wants you to relook at it every five years. You don't have to change it, but, like I said, you're exactly right, Nate, we should have been planning, putting, yeah.
I'm not picking on anybody, just...
No, we should have been putting so much aside each year. But to do a brand-new comprehensive plan, I can see that, but just to revamp the one that you have shouldn't be as expensive as a brand-new one. But it seems like there's fewer and fewer people that are actually doing them now, so of course, it's, the prices are going up. So...
What part of the budget says?
Economic development.
Okay. Anybody else got anything, Sarah?
Well, like Connie's plan of, let's budget ten K, and if it's good for another two years, twenty, well...
Oh, ours, current one is good for two years, yeah.
Current one for two years. If we budget ten K now, can we make up the difference next year? And/or explore the twelve-thousand-dollar option too, if we can.
I think if we're going to spend twelve thousand, I mean, I know that six thousand dollars is a lot of money, but I think if we're gonna spend twelve thousand dollars to have some students from the University of Iowa do it, we would probably be in a better position to spend the eighteen dollars and have, or eighteen thousand and have EC cog.
And have them do the complete thing.
Well, because not only are we gonna spend the twelve thousand dollars for the University of Iowa students to do it, but we're gonna be taking a lot of Connie's time, which is worth more than the six thousand dollars difference. So, are you looking for a motion tonight?
No.
Okay, do it when you do the budget, okay.
Or do you feel that we should budget eighteen thousand this year, Stephanie?
No, I'm okay with, like, doing half this year and half next year, or whatever, because when you, like, when you have EC cog come in and start working on it, obviously it's a process, so it's gonna take some time. Do you pay them upfront for all of it, or do you pay for half of it as you go?
As we go. Actually, our first step was the meeting that we had, that open house that we had, was a big part of, and we'll probably have a couple more of those.
So are they gonna come in next year and say, no, now it's up to twenty-five thousand?
No, we'd sign a contract.
Once you enter the contract. So, like, we could pay them the first half out of this year's budget and the second half out of next year's budget? Would that timeframe work, or you don't know?
We did not budget anything this year.
No, I mean, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two.
We could pay them part of it July first and then part of it the next year.
The next July first, yeah, so I would be in favor of nine and nine, or ten and ten, or whatever.
I think so, yeah.
And if it was only eighteen, then we would have two thousand left over to go into that capital improvement-type fund to keep going.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it on that.
Discuss discussion and possible action on approval for historical preservation to move forward on application for Myers Farm barns to be placed on the national registry.
This was another one that we talked about at the budget meeting that you guys wanted me to put on the agenda. Becky gave us a little email, if you guys had a chance to read that. She would be willing, Leah would be willing to take on this task, and fortunately, because of the timetable, it looks like fifteen-hundred of it would probably come out of this year's budget currently, right now, which they do have in their budget, and the other fifteen could come out of next year's budget. So she was willing to, because of the timeframe, split that up. So it'd be a total of three thousand altogether, but that would enable us to continue working on that and not have to wait, what would they say, two years for a grant to help pay for this.
If we do get it on the national register, there's some benefits to the city.
Yeah, we would be able to apply for several grants that would be, we'd be able to afford because of that.
I make a motion to approve them moving forward with the application.
I second the motion.
A motion, a second. Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Budget workshop, let's move that one to the, do the audit report first.
Okay. We did get the report back from the audit finally. There was just a couple things on there, usual things that they always give us, segregation of duties, because there's only two of us in the office. They think that duties should be segregated a little bit more, but unless we hired three or four more people, it wouldn't happen. So I think every city that I've ever talked to has been written up for that. Let's see. The other one, we did get written up for the budget, mainly because of the sewer project downtown. We had to do that two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar change order. So they expect you to do a budget amendment to pay for that before the project's done. Well, we did it after the project had started, so we did, we went over budget during the year, but we didn't at the end of the year, so, but they still write you up for that, because they want you to do the amendment before you actually spend the funds, which we could not do. The next one was, a couple of these we've already corrected. We went into closed session and on the agenda. I noted that we have possibility of going into closed session, but they want you to quote the Iowa code that allows you to go into closed session on the agenda. So that was another thing they wrote us up. We've always put it on the agenda.
Have we ever done that before?
Huh?
Have we ever put that on there before?
We have.
Probably.
Historically, anyway.
Historically.
I remember in the last six.
But, yeah, so, and then the other thing was, we had already changed already our investment policy, quoted the Iowa code, and Iowa has changed that code number, and we were still using the old one. So in our investment policy resolution, we were still quoting the old code, but we changed that right after.
Yeah, I thought we fixed it.
Yeah, we did, but they still, even though we fixed it, they still, yeah. And the only other thing that they, well, two things, they, of course, they noted that we had some funds that are in negative balance, and I've explained to them that there's no way we can fix that. One of them is the, we did an inter-fund loan to buy the land for the sports complex, so we're paying ourselves back each year out of lost. The other one was Brothers Market, when they were built, the city loaned them a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, and each year that they stay in business, they pay twelve thousand back, so of course, it's at a negative. And the other one was, well, the city hall expansion, but that was kind of like an inter-fund loan also. We've paid that one off, so we're good there. And the housing rehab grant that we do, when we pay a contractor to fix a house, then we have to file for reimbursement and we get that back. So it's in, it's, at certain times of the year, it's in a negative balance. And of course, they don't like us to have negative funds, but in all these cases, we don't have a choice. There's nothing we can do until we get paid for that. The only other one, which was new to me, that they just, for economic development, they just wanted us to take a look at the money that we give to CDG to make sure that, in your opinion, they want, the opinion advises the governing body to evaluate the public benefits to be obtained and discusses the special criteria to be considered in documenting public purpose. They just want to make sure that you guys feel that the money we give to CDG goes for a public purpose. I've never seen this one before, but in my opinion, it does, because all the money we give them goes back to the communities.
Or else we wouldn't give it to them.
Or we wouldn't give it to them. So that one, I think they're just, I think a lot, in a lot of these auditor's cases, the state, each year, when they go into legislative session, they come up with all these little things, and that's how they, one of them. They just want to make sure that the public's aware of how we're spending their money and they're okay with it. But I don't have any problem with that, because I feel the money that we give to CDG goes to help our economic development and it's a public purpose. So those are the ones that we, were on our report. Any questions on any of those? They'll give us a packet, they usually give me enough for everybody, but last year I told them, just give me a couple instead of ten, because I didn't know if you guys want a copy, so if you do speak now or if ever hold your peace, we'll have one in the city hall, one in my office, and we usually put one in the library for public view. But we're still on the budget too. Jake is here from the ambulance, he was not here at the last budget workshop, so I don't know if he wanted to say something today.
So we appreciate your consideration for continued support, so our request isn't changing from last year. It's still the other half of the capital contribution towards the new ambulance, as well as the per capita for the operations.
When was it planned to buy that new ambulance?
So we've moved forward, the order's been placed with an expected delivery of about three, three to four months after arrival of the chassis. We're working with Lynch Ford right now to get the chassis ordered and delivered to Sumner. So we've went with Lifeline, which is an Iowa company, who have the ambulance manufactured. So we're looking at a delivery date probably around August, by the time everything gets there, so...
What's the expected cost?
The total expected cost is about two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. So the amount that went above what we had initially projected, because we waited to order, will be absorbed by the service.
Any other questions for Jake?
What's that?
I'd say any other questions for Jake. All righty, let's go to TIF.
Um, next budget year, we will have our TIF rebate for Brothers Market and also the, um, payback of the loan, which is 12,000, comes out of TIF each year to pay down on the $160,000 loan to Brothers Market. We did do a TIF rebate for budget blinds, but it will not kick in till the following fiscal year, so there would, there wouldn't be any for that. Looking at, um, taxes on TIF to be around 141,179 to cover those TIF. Any questions on that? The downtown rehab that we, whenever someone does a downtown rehab project, that money is reimbursed out of the TIF, and also the splash pad, um, payment that we make to Hills Bank comes out of TIF also, so that's why it's 141.
Anybody? Sort of lots.
Move on to lost. Um, I anticipate our lost revenue for next budget year to be around 284,000. What we have left, we actually doubled up this year and made two payments on the Skid Loe or Backhoe, I always get it wrong.
Backhoe.
Backhoe, so that is paid off, we were paying that loan off with, um, lost funds, so we will not have that. The City Hall, the last payment on that was made also, so we will not have City Hall or the Backhoe, um, for next year. What we do have is 30,520 dollars that help fund the streetlight bill, 29,764, which goes to cover, um, cost of insurance. We budgeted 3,000, um, for fireworks, 4,000, um, Southeastland after-school program, and then we have three more years of our interfund loaned for the sports complex land. Each year, we take 48,246 dollars out of lost and transfer to that fund. So that comes out to 170,577. Oh, no, that's this year, I'm sorry, 142,497. So we will be taking in a little over, more than $100,000 than, um, would, would need to go out. Just wanna, before you get excited and wanna spend all those funds, just wanna let you know that, um, one of the main reasons we've been able to do so much in the last five to six years, because lost funds. We've done a lot of nice projects, so take that into consideration. We don't know what's gonna come up that we might need it for.
Can we take some of those lost funds and pay for the chemicals and maintenance of the waiting pool, splash pad?
Um, that's pretty much routine maintenance, I mean, we could, we can use a portion of our lost funds for any general purpose. But, like I said, a, a lot of times, it's projects, but we can, part, part of our funds have to be used to pay down, um, the cost of operations, so, I mean, that's why we pay so much for.
How much did you budget for chemicals?
Chemicals, I'm, I'm not sure right now. No, so it, it can be used for any general purpose.
Was it 7,500?
I don't remember what it was.
It was, it was like 51, 52, I think? For maintenance and supplies.
I thought it was 5,000 last year, and you bumped it up to 75.
Yeah, I think you were bumping it up.
Yep.
So we could take the, that out of lost, yep.
Anybody else have any ideas about them? That you wanna see done?
And like I said, it doesn't have to be set in stone tonight, we could, um, before we finalize the budget, we could always add to it. Cause I know we were talking about some equipment and that kinda stuff, so, I mean, that could always be an item that we use lost funds for, like we did the Backhoe.
How old's a mower that we got right now?
Two.
Two years old?
The one on the second.
Yeah, so we just got one.
We haven't got a cake for it yet.
Travis's wish list. And what did we decide, are we gonna need a bigger one than what we have for?
We talked about it at the last, at the budget meeting. Travis wasn't here, though.
Yeah, he wasn't here. There was some discussion that we might need a bigger, like a wider deck.
The 100-inch deck.
The 105 or whatever for out.
I wouldn't do anything until you guys finalize your plans on what you're actually gonna have out there, because you could get a 100, 105-inch deck and realize that you can do the outfield's and that's it, because it won't fit anywhere else. I don't know what we're gonna end up with, or how soon.
Well, we're, we just know that the soccer fields are gonna be first.
Right, so.
If we would have to, um.
And that's probably four hours.
With a 60-inch deck?
Right now, it's four hours.
With a 72?
72.
So we'll cut that four to two with the giant one.
Yeah.
Is that worth the extra money?
I mean, that's, that's something I'd talk to Drayton and Connie, I mean, to me, no, not right now, but, I mean, I'm not the one.
I'm not the one doing it either, but I feel like there's other things that maybe would be more needed now than that.
Oh, purchase, yeah. I mean, that's why I said, I don't, I mean, that's something I could sit down and talk to Drayton and Connie about, I don't, I mean, me personally, I'd see, I'd see use of something else than, than that right now.
Mm-hmm, me too.
But, that's, uh, you mow the soccer field, it's pretty flat and easy, it's, it's pretty, pretty painless, so.
And what do we know about what we're gonna use for the ditches and whatnot?
So, I have been in contact with a couple of the farmers around here who have disc mowers, and they've given me a pretty, pretty cheap cost to just pop down through them and hit them once. So they go one trip down and back, um, do it three times a year for the major holidays, just kinda like what the, the state was doing, and we can go with that and try it for a year or two, see how it pans out, whether you guys think that's enough maintenance on it or not, and go from there.
And do you know what those amounts are, just?
I, I don't have that right up in front of me.
Which we probably don't wanna disclose right now, in case we have to go out for RMBs.
Yeah.
But I think it'd be worth the contracting it out for a year or two, just to see how it goes, before we spend a whole bunch of money on a piece of equipment that we might not have to, but.
I don't wanna get, uh, so like when it comes, when you're looking at promoting the ditches, I, I don't wanna go buy a piece of equipment that that's all it's meant for.
Right.
I wanna find some, a multi-use piece of equipment, so yeah, we can throw an attachment on it, but yeah, then we can turn around and do this and this with it too. That's when we were trying to figure out the CIP, I told Connie, that was the hardest thing, because I don't know what we're actually gonna need until.
Until we need it.
Until we actually get smacked in the face with it, and then, I think, uh, trying to, trying to find the most effective way to get through the first year or two without purchasing a lot of, a lot of big stuff would probably be our best bet.
Anybody anything else? All right, sort of miscellaneous.
Um, don't really have anything else, um, tonight. The rest of it'll be at the next one on the 5th, on Wednesday, which will be at 7:15. Because we planned it after the sign workshop at Gwen's. It'll be Wednesday, the 5th, and that will be police and all the Travis's departments, and then any other odds and ends?
Fire department.
Gwen's fire?
Fire, yep.
Okay.
That was seven o'clock, 7:15.
7:15, we planned it, yeah.
7:15 on the 5th, yep.
All right, correspondents?
I don't have anything.
City engineer report?
Dave is not here tonight, he will be at our next meeting, and he will have a report regarding Business 30, and also some information, um, hopefully on the water project, and he's planning on meeting with Travis and I before that meeting, so we can try to get some things, reports for you for the meeting.
Public's work, Public's Works Director Report?
That's, uh, nothing right now.
Police Chief's report?
Well, just remember to, uh, shovel your sidewalks.
Rick, what is that process? So we get four inches of snow tonight, then what?
After 24 hours, we'll, if you need to shovel, we'll call and take your, take your sidewalk.
And if I still don't shovel it, how long do I get? Then I get 48 hours, is that right, or I get 24 more?
I think it's 24.
24.
We usually start it, end it up to the city.
So I have a question, because I actually did get a phone call on this. So Saturday night, people got tagged for not shoveling, and it said if you had any questions, to call City Hall within 24 hours, but the gripe was, and I don't even know if this person really got ticketed, or if they just saw it on Facebook and were griping about it, but the gripe was City Hall's not open on Sunday, so they had 24 hours to contact City Hall about their issue, but they didn't have, no way to contact City Hall, because that you guys weren't open, so.
Well, they don't have 24 hours to contact us, they have 24 hours to shovel, but they can call City Hall if they have any questions.
I think it also says to call me, doesn't it?
I don't know.
Shouldn't it show?
I didn't get one.
Well, the, the, the side of that is, it was a weekend, we didn't, so naturally, the maintenance department was now, but I think, I don't know how many you guys did today?
We did probably 12 to 15 today, but Saturday night was.
And so those people are gonna get bills from the city, then?
They will. So our maintenance department had to spend most of their day-to-day shovel in sidewalks for people that didn't shovel, but Saturday night was probably the first time that they've been ticketed, and a lot of them hadn't done it.
Hadn't touched it.
Hadn't touched it.
And is it 75 dollars an hour? Is it 75 dollars an hour that they're gonna be billed?
It's 75, unless it's a double lot or something, and it's gonna be at 150.
The sad part of the deal, it's just like grass, that, uh, it's, it's the same people over and over and over.
Right. And, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, but I know that there's some kids in town that would probably do it for 10 bucks, so if you legitimately can't get out there, you probably could contact somebody and they could find somebody to help you.
You neighbor kid would probably do it.
Or, you know, call one of the little local kids in town, they'd probably do it for 10 bucks. It shouldn't have to be that any of our workers are spending any of their time that they should be using towards something else for something so silly. I mean, you're a homeowner, you have a responsibility, and you just need to do what you need to do.
We're having a little problem too with cars that are parking downtown that haven't moved in the last snow events too, so we're gonna remind people that if you live on Main Street, you can't park your car on Main Street, um, especially in the downtown area. It's, Travis has had to come in at midnight, three or four different times with the guys, and there were still cars down there, so they need to move their cars from downtown too.
Coming in at midnight, like during a snow emergency, or just like to?
To move piles.
Just to, because they couldn't get it during the day.
I mean, if we're not in a snow emergency at that time.
No, but at 2 o'clock, you shouldn't.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right, you're right. All right. So 24 hours, they get, they get ticketed after 24 hours, and they got 24 hours to shovel it. So, I mean, there's no need to.
Two days, and then.
I mean, we go, we go and shovel it, I mean, they can't bitch that we weren't open, they knew you had 24 hours to shovel it.
And the ticket itself has no monetary value, it's just if you weren't to shovel after that ticket, that's where the money would come in.
Well, if the, uh, county would send a bill.
We only charge them if we have to shovel.
If you have to go shovel.
So there's really no penalty or no ticket, what it is, it's, it's a fee.
It's a notice.
You're charged because we had to shovel it.
So the real expenses is, one, for Christina making the things, two, us buying the papers, and three, the time it takes us to go out and deliver, so really, the city's.
Yeah. The other problem with that is, there could be other things that you guys need to be spending your time on that don't include babysitting people who can't shovel their walks. So it's really just a waste of everybody's time. Do you know, Rick, we're, you said it's, it's a lot of the same people, are they elderly people? I mean, is there something we could do to help out that process for somebody who legitimately can't do it?
Well, when, when we got most, the most of the letters on that Washington Street.
Two businesses downtown?
Yeah.
This, actually, that don't?
I will tell you that I did, I did fall downtown on Main Street, um, because it wasn't shoveled, and it hurt like a, and so, I mean, business owners really do need to be even more cautious.
There's one or two that are empty houses that, there's just nobody there, but they know, each year, they just let us do it, and they, we put it against our property tax, and you'd think they'd find somebody a little bit cheaper than 75 bucks, but that's, they just do it. But there was, there was quite a few this time, but like I said, we, we've been extremely lenient to, because it snowed so many times, but it's like, no, it stopped snowing for a couple days, it's time to.
Yeah.
Time to do it, so.
For sure.
If you're old enough to have a home, you're old enough to shovel. You'd think, you'd think.
All right. Fire Chiefs report?
I don't have a lot. 284 calls for service last year, that's a record by about eight. Front pace for 360 already this year. Thirty-seven active members, everything's going well. Any questions?
Thirty-seven, you said?
Yeah.
How many of those calls are out at the rehab center?
A lot. Jake?
Uh, I can email you those numbers, I don't have the report in front of me, but.
I would say a hundred.
What's that anymore? I think that might be a little high, it's probably 60 to 75, I think. So I can get those numbers for you, so the biggest thing is, I know they've kinda progressively been filling it, and as of about September, um, they had all things full, so they're at capacity now.
Oh, great.
Wow.
So not quite a third of the call.
It's just progressive, it started off a few, then just, I think some of the same patient, too.
Yeah.
So you, are you guys responding to those too?
This, uh, I'll say this, um, we really don't ever know what you got to get there. The pages we get sometimes don't drive at the circumstances, so I don't feel comfortable at that point. My family member, I would want, plus one.
We agree. And with our increased volume, you know, we're starting to get to the point where both trucks are out and we're on our way back from the seater, so it's nice to have one there to kinda evaluate, be polar.
Yeah, there is some medical staff there, so, you know, if, if we don't have a response, which is very rare, that'd be a place to be at, but I just don't, maybe somewhere down the road, but I, I just, I don't feel comfortable yet saying what I'm gonna do.
Anybody got any questions for Brandon? Did you have elections this year?
Uh, we did, and, uh, remember, unfortunately, mine wasn't up till last year, so stuck with me for this year, I. Brad's still the assistant. Jeff's still trying to do the master brass, but, um, same with all of them.
City Administrator's report?
Uh, let's see. Um, we already talked about sidewalks and the parking downtown. I did get ahold of the company that did the brickwork on the library, they are going to come back by this week sometime to take a look and give me an estimate on what they anticipate the rest of the brick will cost. And I just wanted to congratulate Travis, um, as of this week, he will be a city employee for 10 years.
Wow.
Wow.
And thank him for his service.
When you get an estimate on that brickwork. When you get an estimate on that brickwork...
Jeez, candle.
Would we budget for that? Can we make sure that, or can we, I don't want to give them the money and then not do it because they can, once it's in their budget, they can spend it. And if they don't do it, so could we...
Put it in a fund for...
Yep.
We can. If we do find later that we need more, we can always do a budget amendment too. And then the, the history preservation did get their reports back today for the other buildings that, so you should probably be getting those from them here probably in the next meeting or two.
And have we, have you, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what we were waiting on to find out about the door for the history center? Was that reported?
Yep. They sent it to Christina today to make copies for their groups on, at their next meeting they're going to be discussing.
Do we have anybody to look at the history center? I mean, we got, it's the city building, we got the worst-looking building downtown.
Yeah. This, one of the reports was for the history center and the other one was for the library. They just want to make sure when we do the reports that we do everything and keep it the historic value with the building, so...
I think we're going to have to bite the bullet and just pay a good check to get it fixed.
Well, we're hoping now that we've got this, this evaluation that this guy did was the first step to try to get us available where we could apply for maybe the possibility of some grants. So that's why we were waiting to get this done.
Yep.
But yeah, if we don't get any grants, we're going to have to do something. Travis took a look at the brick today or yesterday, and it's, I mean, we've been evaluating each year, and right now it's, it's pretty bad. It's really starting to flake off and decay.
So when we, when we put that new door in the back, are we, do we got to make that handicap accessible?
So it's a crash bar, is the question, a panic bar. We can put a, we had Lynn County come out and discuss it with me, and we can put a corner turn on it, and that would be sufficient.
Would I do anything like outside the front door, outside the door?
No.
Okay.
Connie, if they go to look for grants, do we know how long that is going to take?
Uh, we don't. I'm hoping that this company that comes to look at the library might be able to give me some information too, because they're really one of a very few that actually do that kind of work around in this area that I was able to find.
Preservation.
Yep. So, but they did an awesome job on the library, and they did a couple other towns where they gave, gave me pictures and references and stuff, and I called them and they were all very happy with them, so it's just...
So they're going to look at the history center also? Okay.
Yeah, but I did have two other companies a couple years back look at it, but like I said, they, they both gave me estimates for over, around 20 or a little over 20,000 just to remove the lead paint. There's probably four layers of paint on that building. We're not sure which layer is the lead, but it doesn't matter, once it's there, it's there.
It's the bottom layer, you know that.
It's the bottom. It's colorful.
Anything else, Connie?
That's all I had.
Mayor's report. First of all, I'd like to just thank the city workers for getting their snow removal done. Always seems like it always hits on a weekend. I mean, I don't know. We got a meeting next Wednesday for signs down at Gwen's, right? That's at 5?
Sign workshop, yeah. The presentation actually starts at 5:30, but the doors will open at 5, so you can mingle and grab some snacks.
Just want to give a congratulations to, I think her name's Janelle, Leva?
Avila.
Whatever.
Avila.
For winning state title, for first Lisbon girl to win a state title in wrestling, and probably the first town to have brother-sister combination have state titles.
She's only a freshman, too.
Yeah.
And I know they're doing a big thing for the Don Bosco Lisbon meet this for, this Thursday, number one, number two. They're doing an open house at the school beforehand, or be, I don't know what time that, I seen.
I think it's 4 o'clock.
That's right, since it's 4. They're making a big deal out of this, and they're doing a reception for Coach Smith's 30th year. That is 30 years ago he won a title.
Yeah. And there's a lot of wrestlers from that team coming back for it, so...
I thought he won a title before now.
Forty.
That's what I'm saying, it's 40th.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1980 was his, his first championship.
And that's out after the meet out at the Regal Crown, so if you get a chance to go to meet and then go out there and mingle with some people, you're going to probably see some, and from what I heard, a lot of the Don Bosco people are going out there too because they respect, that's just the respect that Lisbon and Don Bosco have towards each That's all I got. Uh, what's our, Sarah?
I don't got anything.
John?
Uh, RC Rail is starting a new program called Photo Voice. It's for school-aged children. There'll be some training involved, and they'll be taking pictures that show how alcohol, vaping, and tobacco affects the community. So if anybody's interested in that, call William at 319-499-8280. He's with RC Rail.
What is Photo Voice, John? Do you know?
Photo Voice is taking pictures that exemplify the feelings of the youth on how alcohol, vaping, and tobacco affects the community and affects them. And Southeastland kitchen door, it's dragging a lot now. It tells them, closes by itself. You have to lift up on it and pull in or go outside and push it.
One that goes to the back alley?
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't know if the company that installed that and has worked on it before is still in business or not.
I'll see what I can find out.
Okay. That's all I have.
Stephanie?
I don't have anything.
Nate?
I have nothing tonight other than thank the Public Works for clearing the streets and keeping us safe.
Alright, anybody else? Me adjourned.